Absolutely. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting of the Board of Ed to order. Let's please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you so much. Good evening. As you can see, I do not have my partner here. Dr. Jones did join us for executive session, but unfortunately she is not feeling well. And so she is going to drive home and join us virtually. She doesn't live far, so I think she'll be on shortly. She'll also, there are obviously some things we talked about in executive session. One of them was on safety and security. And she will address some of that in her superintendent's report later. One other thing that I wanted to do before we start the meeting, I should also note that Christina Downey and Michael Joseph are panelists or joining us virtually. They're also not feeling well, or there are different reasons, health concerns. So we are where we are. I would like to make a motion actually to move the second item of the consent agenda, which was on the Board of Education meeting calendar to the first item on the action items. Can I get a second for that motion? Thank you, Karen. And can I also then, can we take a vote? And we're gonna have to do roll call unfortunately tonight since we do have people on virtually. So we're gonna have to go back to that. So if you're in favor of moving this item for the consent agenda to action items, so we can actually discuss it. I'd appreciate that. So Cody Kittle, how much vote? Yes. Karen Hirsch?
Yes.
Joe Kelly? Laura Costin? Karen Kowalski? Christina Downey?
Yes.
And Michael Joseph Mercanti Anthony?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That passes eight zero. Okay, I'm gonna put now a motion of the consent agenda on the table. Can I get a second for that? Karen Hirsch, okay, let's do a roll call again, starting down that way this time. Laura Costin? Say yes, please. Okay, Joe Kelly?
Yes.
Karen Kowalski? Kathleen Stowe is a yes. Karen Hirsch?
Yes.
Cody Kittle, thank you. Christina Downey?
Yes.
Michael Joseph Mercanti Anthony?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That passes eight zero. Okay. Now we go into our public hearing and we are going to hear from the student government. Are they here in person? They are in the back. Thanks, guys.
Good evening Chairman Stowe, Dr. Jones, and members of the board and meeting attendees. I'm Javi Sarah, Senior Class President at Greenwich High School. Currently, the student government is facilitating the Voice for Change initiative. Governor Lamott has allocated $1.5 million of federal ARP-ESR funding for 76 participating high schools. At GHS, students are drafting their proposals on how to best spend $20,000 to improve the GHS community at large. Ultimately, the student body will vote for a proposal on March 11th, and the winning proposal will be awarded the $20,000 in federal funding. Voice for Change offers students a unique opportunity to have a direct hand in improving GHS. And I'm excited to see what creative initiatives my peers can come up with. Even if students don't create the winning proposal, they will be participating in an active and productive dialogue about how to improve Greenwich High School. And I'm hopeful that this discussion will continue. Greenwich High School is home to over 3,000 students and faculty, and its best self can only be realized through the active engagement and advocacy of all of its community members. Additionally, we have heard that the bridge under Route One will be undergoing repairs next fall, and the traffic will be one lane both ways for two years. Considering that in its current five-lane state, Route One at Hillside has frequent traffic jams of a considerable size, the limit in lanes will only cause more traffic and with it aggravation. To address these traffic concerns, students support the swift construction of the access road near Cardinal Stadium. We understand that it may require additional funding in order to work on both the GHS vestibule and Phase Two of the stadium project in the same year. But we feel that time is of the essence for both of these necessary projects. As representatives of the student body, we implore the board to prioritize funding for the completion of Phase Two of the stadium project as soon as possible, especially as the construction on the bridge under Route One begins. I'd also like to publicly advocate on behalf of our school resource officers Fred Reij and Chris Wallace regarding their interest in a third partner, a therapy dog. From rigorous academics to navigating a two-year-long pandemic, GHS students deal with plenty of stress. I alongside with the overwhelming majority of students based on a recent survey, believe that a full-time therapy dog could help students navigate this stress just a little bit better. High school always have its fair share of ups and downs and drama in between, but we all can agree that seeing a furry four-legged friend would truly put a smile on anyone's face. Finally, I want to offer my overdue congratulations to Chairman Stowe, Vice Chairwoman Kowalski, Mr. Kittle, Ms. Costin, and Mr. Mercanti Anthony on their new positions. I'm excited to work with all of you as we move forward. I'll see you all in 2022. Happy holidays.
Thank you very much. It's a good way to start the meeting.
Good evening Chairwoman Stowe, Dr. Jones, members of the board and meeting attendees. I'm Kwame Blotting, Student Body President of Greenwich High School. December 14, 2012 was a dark day in America. The 26 precious lives taken at Sandy Hook Elementary School of Newtown, Connecticut, were 26 lives gone too soon. I remember that day. I was a third grader who had no clue as to why the teachers were frantically talking with each other, why police and barricades heavily guarded our usually lively pickup circle, and why my mother hugged me so tight when I returned home from school that day. I had no clue that kids that were barely younger than myself and teachers would not be returning to their level ones that evening. As I matured each year, December 14 would fill my usually upbeat and energetic cell with a silent fear, a stillness and light of a tragedy so disturbing that I could simply do nothing but think, what if that was me? However, this emotion is something that I continue to confront as Sandy Hook was not the last time that a mass school shooting occurred during my primary and secondary education. I'd like to use this opportunity with you tonight to offer my reflections and the student perspective on what took place at Greenwich High School one week ago on Thursday, December 9. I along with many students fled GHS in fear of what could be, not in fear of what it was. The disturbing message written on the bathroom stall had spread like wildfire by social media and the lack of communication from the administration through the school into a state of chaos. Kids were physically running through the hallways, breaking out into panic attacks and crying in light of a situation they had limited information about and could only assume the worst possible outcome of. Out of the 10 years that I have been a student in this town, last Thursday was the first day for even a split second that I questioned my safety in school. Consequently, students were incredibly disappointed in the administration's response. Javi and I are grateful that we have the opportunity to meet with Mr. Mayo on Friday to express our discontent with the lack of clear communication with staff, teachers, and students, and the fact that no shelter in place and/or lockdown was initiated. We appreciate that Mr. Mayo was highly responsive to our concerns and openly admitted that there were better ways to handle the situation. Mr. Mayo's willingness to acknowledge where things went wrong and the administration's commitment to handling dangerous threats in the future gives me hope that we won't see something like last Thursday ever again at GHS. It pains my heart to say, but the reality is we live in a generation of school shootings and navigating threats is a given obstacle for the future. Two days ago at GHS, we commemorated the victims of Sandy Hook by wearing green and writing down the names of either teachers or friends within the building that we trust to have our back. That practice is a great way to honor the victims of that day and the many other days that we wish never happened. However, the best way to honor them, the only way that really matters is to properly equip our schools with improved protocols to protect students, faculty, and administration. To that end, as representatives of the student body, we will work tirelessly with the GHS administration to ensure that safety procedures are followed and communication protocols are in place to protect our school community. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. Take care and enjoy the holiday with loved ones. We look forward to a happy and safe 2022.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have comments from GEA Lil. She's online.
Go ahead, Lil. You can speak now.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm Lilian Perron, President of the GEA. We are all here tonight in some type of leadership role, whether you know it or not. In that role comes great responsibility. Whether we are BET member, Board of Education member, administrator, teacher, parent, or student, that that responsibility comes for us to make decisions that are best for our children, our teachers, and our community, and not based on personal gain, privilege, or party interest. I was reading an article in Newsweek the other day, and it talked about how hard it is for colleges to get students to go into mining. I bet you thought I was going to say teaching. That is true too, but that's not what the article was about. Why would you want to get a degree and learn the techniques of coal mining? It has a negative mindset of being dangerous, a dirty job. The thought behind this article was if we were to move forward as a nation and world and become energy efficient, we need miners to learn the new techniques to mine for precious metals, to make our fuel-efficient cars, and other things that are going to help our carbon emissions to save the environment. Bottom line, we need to change our thought processes and look at things differently and through a different lens. We can't think and do things the same way anymore because life has changed as we know it. It does not work, and it does not bring the desired results that we need. So where am I going with this? Well, hop on the school bus, everybody. Fasten your seat belts. I'm gonna take you for a ride. We are humans and creatures of habit. Change is not easy, and it's very difficult for some to accept. I believe in Greenwich, our parents, our students, teachers, and our community. So let the ride begin. To my BET friends, I've heard you say in meetings that we need to keep 2% cap, and then at other meetings say, if you need money, we'll let the floodgates open. Well, now's the time to let those gates open, my friends. I ask you to do everything that you can to support the superintendent's budget. Our administration has done their due diligence to be fiscally responsible and make adjustments where they can. But if we are truly to be a great district and service all our students, it's not gonna happen with that 2%. Oh, yes, I hear you say that we don't make the cuts. We just cap it. It's up to the superintendent and the board to figure it out. Well, you need to change your mindset. Our schools, our children, our teachers, our parents need you now, and you can't put a cap on that. And working with Dr. Jones and having conversations with the administration, I know they have worked hard to find efficiencies. Our children are more than just a number. We can never have planned for what we would have experienced during these past two years as a district, state, and nation. We need to all think and act differently. Remember, our teachers did pivot. We were the only district in school. Our teachers were exhausted physically, mentally. We still have not recovered. We have buildings that collapsed, teachers displaced for classrooms, for the classrooms and buildings. Our ALP teachers have accommodated a model change that they accepted during COVID, but now we must make things fair and equitable for them. Our sped staff are overwhelmed, overworked, overloaded, along with our pre-K teachers and eval teams, as they must learn new ways and create new teams for us to be responsive to incorporate the needed changes required for our special education report. To my administration friends, you must always have the courage to fight what is right for your students and staff and have the courage to speak the truth. To the parents and our Greenwich community, we need to start to see and talk about what we have in common and not our differences. I may not agree with some of your actions and some of your words, but what I do agree with is what we have in common, and that is your love for your children. Trying to communicate what is in your heart, what you feel right is for you and your children. We just need to find a better way to do together as a community, working together. We must also educate our children on social responsibility and responsible use of social media and how impactful and damaging misinformation can be. And lastly, to my GEA friends, thank you. You've been through a lot these past two years. Try to do what you do best, teach, learning new ways to teach, coming into work each day, not knowing what to expect, doing your best caring for students, and at the same time caring for yourself, your families, and your own children. But we too must act differently. Whether you've been vaccinated or not vaccinated, we are teachers. We are professionals. It is our responsibility as professionals to work and collaborate with our fellow colleagues, no matter what our differences are, because we are here for students and for each other, and that comes first. In closure, please listen to this following word, very powerful quote when I first, my first speech as president. I share it with you as in closing by Hi, I'm Ghanat. I've come to the frightening conclusion that I am a decisive element. It is my personal approach that creates the climate. It is my daily mood that makes the weather. I possess tremendous power to make life miserable or joyous. I can be a tool of torture or an instrument of inspiration. I can humiliate or humor, hurt or heal. In all situations, it is my response that decides whether a crisis is escalated or de-escalated and a person is humanized or dehumanized. If we treat people as they are, we make them worse. If we treat people as they ought to be, we help them become what they are capable of being. Thank you all. Have a healthy, happy, and safe holiday, and I'll see you in the new year. Thank you.
Thank you, Lil. Next up from PTAC, Mimi Duff.
Good evening, Dr. Jones, Chair Stowe, and other members of the Board of Education. I am Mimi Duff, President of PTA Council, representing the 15 school PTAs and the families of all of their members. I'd like to start my comments by saying thank you to our educators and administrators that continue to rise to the challenge during trying times. We recognize that as COVID numbers rise and we deal with potential security issues that our educators and that our students also are under a great deal of stress. We stand ready to assist in any way we can, so please don't hesitate to ask if there's anything we can do. I'll focus my comments tonight mainly on our support for the budget, and a couple of my colleagues will also speak. Committee chairs from the Special Education Support and Diversity Equity and Inclusion will also provide comments, and we fully support their efforts as they continue to advocate for our students. Onto the budget. We had a PTAC board meeting today, and our board fully supports the proposed operating and the capital budgets for the Greenwich Public Schools. On the capital side, we're very concerned about the current state of many of our buildings, not to mention the lack of ADA accessibility and essential security issues. We support efforts to close the gap on all deferred maintenance, which is currently contributing to so many structural issues. Investing in infrastructure improvements and the maintenance of the town schools is of utmost importance. In our meeting, we were also brainstorming about how we can help our Board of Education and also the BET members understand the urgency of the needs. We would be happy to coordinate with school officials, the Board of Ed, and the BET to make sure that all of our elected officials have the most educated and complete picture of the current state of our buildings. We were happy to hear that the Board of Ed took a tour of Central Middle School before the last meeting. That's a good start. Given the size of the school budget line items, we would like to see all, meaning each and every one of the elected officials on the Board of Ed and the BET attend school tours for each of the potential renovation projects. To that end, we are happy to help coordinate to make sure that schedules can be accommodated. To reiterate, we fully support the proposed operating and capital budgets as proposed by Dr. Jones. I want to close by highlighting some of the great work going on in PTAC these days. First and foremost, we continue to work with the district on many committees, including textbook reviews for high school math and middle school French curriculums, along with various other topics, including ALPS, BED, and academic achievement. We remain grateful to be involved in these conversations, and hopefully through our involvement, we can achieve better outcomes for our students. We appreciate the efforts by the administration to foster greater consistency, transparency, and academic excellence in our district. Our goals in PTAC are fully aligned in this way. Two weeks ago, we also hosted a public session on socio-emotional learning and academics. The speakers included Doctors Alina and Fabian Boyce from the Greenwich Public School District Behavioral Support Team. The presentation was recorded and is available on our PTAC website under Council Resources, Presentations, and Resources. Stay tuned for more of our public sessions, which are monthly on Fridays, and we will do a better job to advertise these in advance. They're always recorded and made available. Thank you for your time, and I'd also like to wish everyone a happy and healthy holiday season. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mimi. All right, now we're gonna start with our community comments. I have to say, I don't know if anyone appreciated the new agenda where we have times and what are obviously not set in stone, but their guidelines. I realize we're already running five minutes behind, but hopefully we'll catch up. But we will have an hour, of course, like we have in the past of community comments. We do have 28 speakers, so I suspect we'll be having more at the end of the meeting. But with that, as you know, you have three minutes, and I think the first person up is Jennifer Taylor. Sue Repair followed by Randy Chikino. Sorry. Thank you. I'm sorry to ask this, but you have to keep your mask on.
I do. It's honestly very hot.
I know. I know. Believe me, I feel your pain. It's not our calls. It's under the executive order.
Dear members of the board, thank you for taking the time to listen to me this evening. I hope.
Can you hear me now? That's beautiful. Thank you.
All right, I'm gonna reset myself. Dear members of the board, thank you for taking the time to listen to me tonight. I hope you enjoy my JC Strong Candy that I left up there for you. My name is Jennifer Taylor, mommy of four cute and crazy kids. Ages are two, four, six, and eight. My husband Sam Taylor and I are both products and proponents of public school education. We are proud to tell people that our children attend Julian Curtis and grateful for the opportunities afforded by the district. That said, Julian Curtis facilities are antiquated at best. We implore you to allocate the resources desperately needed for this school. We decided to move back to Greenwich in 2019 and raise our children in my husband's childhood home. As such, we are the second generation of Taylors to benefit from Julian Curtis. I have to say, while the exterior of the schoolhouse is extremely charming, both Sam and I were shocked to see the facilities were nearly identical to those from three decades before. I was saddened by the lack of restoration at JC, especially when you consider that I grew up in a small town outside Cleveland where my own elementary school has been twice renovated during the same time. To be honest, the town's lack of attention to their facilities even gave me pause when considering where we would educate our children. We are a family strongly rooted in GPS. My mother-in-law Diane Taylor received the Distinguished Teacher Award in 2017, and my brother-in-law Dan is the fun gym teacher at North Mayanis. Thanks to GPS, the four kids from this family went on to graduate from elite universities such as Harvard, Penn, Columbia, NYU, and Wake Forest, to name a few. Three of the four children live and work in the community too. Don't we all love when we get to see the talent come back? As you can see, we know and value the opportunities afforded by GPS. The unfortunate truth, however, is that many of our facilities are in the same sorry condition as the New York Giants football record this year. Julian Curtis needs your help so that our facilities can match the same high performance as our teachers.
Thirty seconds.
So that our teachers have the modern resources that need to continue educating at an elite level so that our parents moving to Greenwich can tour the school and have the confidence that they don't have to send their children to private schools to receive a tremendous education. I am here to support the proposed capital spending for Julian Curtis and the other schools in our community. There is no question teachers are second to none. The only thing that we are missing are the facilities to match. We want to have an environment where all children can thrive and learn. JC is incredibly diverse, as you know, with 60 countries and 30 languages represented in all socioeconomic backgrounds.
All right.
This Title I school deserves town support.
Thank you. We gotta go. Next up is Randy Chikino, followed by Katie. Thank you.
Good evening, Board of Education members. Thank you for your time. I want to start by thanking you for your past and future service and your very important role making a positive impact in our children's future. I am the PTAC representative for curriculum enrichment for Julian Curtis School, and I fully support the 1.8 million renovation on the capital budget for Julian Curtis. And I'm here not only as a JC parent today, but as a parent of future schools in the future. I chose JC for my child to be a magnet student because of the size of the school, the community I felt upon visiting and that, so that my child will be with a diverse student population representative of the public school setting that I grew up in which I felt served me well. I have found it to live up to those expectations. I'm a very involved parent advocate and give back by enriching the students with experiences that will help them thrive academically, like author visits, and also expose them to learning outside the classroom and curriculum like Bronx Zoo visits, science programs, field trips. In doing so, in doing this for over a year, I've come to learn how much the JC community in particular so heavily depends on everything that comes from the district and the school and not from anything outside of it. As a Title I school where over 40% of students qualify for free or reduced lunch, I can tell you firsthand how our JC students' learning relies on what comes from all of you and our district and budget, from infrastructure to curriculum to enrichment to having the right space to learn. Therefore, their path for the future depends heavily on the decisions made by all of you. Also, over the last year, I've experienced the decreases year on year of assured experiences and enrichment paid for by the district as it is not a distinct line item on the budget, and therefore it doesn't always get protected like other budget line items. Beyond the learning environment, the learning experiences are also in decline. This puts even more pressure on our small Title I school to somehow fend for itself for kids to learn, and we simply can't keep up. The parents can't keep up. We do not live in that type of district or community, and the kids are losing out because of it. Our children deserve to have a school that is up to 21st century learning.
Thirty seconds.
Environment and experiences alongside safety standards as a start. It is too long overdue, along with the other GPS capital projects, and it's time. Thank you for your time. Happy holidays.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have Katie Yu, who I think I see online, followed by Stephanie Cowie.
Good evening. Can you hear me, Kathleen?
I can. Thanks, Katie.
I'll try to be brief. Good evening. In light of last week's events, tonight's discussion about a safety road for GHS could not come at a more apropos time. It is my understanding that the Board of Ed is largely in support of the safety road, but as this is a public forum, hopefully with media coverage tonight, I'm speaking merely to lend my support to the development of this safety road. As students barreled out of GHS last week in fear and panic to the safety of their cars, they were greeted with a stranglehold of cars in frozen traffic on Hillside and East Putnam. When a media truck collided with a student driving a car, the situation got worse. And when the ambulance tried to come to the aid of those injured in the collision, it did. In spite of all this, I have actually heard some say that we were lucky. Thank God, no one was killed. I do not say that lightly. Now, right now is the time to approve this plan and move it forward. Lastly, I really just want to ask if our hands are really tied with regard to the recent outbreak of COVID cases in our district. Today, I myself received three health alert emails. As we're deluged with health announcements today, I think we really need to think about what we are doing right now. As families prepare for the break and visiting families and visiting families and friends, some of whom may be elderly, why are we not considering starting the break earlier or having a couple of remote days before the break? Or at least giving students the option to learn remotely from home? In closing, I would like to take a moment to thank the Board of Ed for. In closing, I would like to take a moment to thank the Board of Ed for all that you do and to wish each of you all the best in the new year. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Katie. Next up, Stephanie, who I see Cowie right there, followed by Miles Spencer.
Oh Superintendent, Dr. Jones, Board and Cabinet Members. My name is Steph Cowie, and Leila Horn and I are co-presidents at GHS. Following last week's events, we want to thank all those involved for their swift determination that this was not a credible threat and for concluding the investigation. We would like to thank Dr. Jones and the Greenwich Police Department for working closely with GHS. Special thanks to our GHS SROs, Officer Wallace and Reach, as well as our GHS administration. We know there were many issues that day, and in speaking with the administration and Greenwich Police Department, they heard our concerns and will work to collaborate and do better. We need to look at things differently. Now on to the budget. We stand in support of Dr. Jones' 2223 operational and capital budget. We also stand with the many here this evening and at home in support of the outstanding projects at OG, JC, GHS, and Central Middle School. We do not deem any one project to be greater priority need than the other. All of these projects are priorities because they all are safety issues, HVAC, air quality, ADA, capacity or security, life safety. There are many in this town who have sat and are continue to sit on feasibility or building committees like the GHS Vestibule Committee that are tasked with the very same priority, safety. We would like to highlight GHS Cardinal Field Improvement Phase Two, which is the second egress for GHS, a priority because of what? You guessed it, safety. GHS houses close to 3,300 lives each day, sits on 54 acres with only one way out and one way in. As you can imagine, this causes many students, parents, faculty, and neighbors anxiety thinking about the what-if scenarios. We agree. In past, emergency responders have found it difficult getting to the school and access to the school for emergency and/or drills because of the lack of a second egress. Without the completion of Phase Two, the second egress, we are putting our entire GHS community at risk. There is a pattern here. These very same priorities are presented year over year by the Board of Ed to the BET, yet nothing moves forward. It is unfortunate that the majority of our BET members are not in agreement with these projects, and they continue to kick the money can down the road. But to what end? A catastrophic event where safety has been the greatest lapse? We need to take better care of our children, teachers, faculty, neighbors, and families by taking care of our infrastructure. We need your voices. We ask parents to please contact the BET representatives and advocate for the needs of the Greenwich Public Schools. Thank you all for your time and consideration, and to the Board of Ed, we thank you for continuing to do what you are doing each and every day. So thank you. Stay healthy. Happy holidays.
Thank you very much. Next up, Miles Spencer, followed by David Levine. I don't see him. Okay, so we could always come back if he appears. All right. Is that you? I'm sorry, David. All right. Go ahead, David Levine. Yeah, there you go. You got up early. Thank you. All right, David Levine, followed by Andy Cosby.
Good evening, Chairwoman Stowe, Dr. Jones and Board. It's good to see you all again. My name is David Levine. My daughter Autumn is in second grade in Mrs. Schuster's class at Julian Curtis, and my wife Lauren and her three siblings went to JC 40 years ago. We love Julian Curtis. Budget conversations are hard. I know that, and it's because budgets are about values. It's about putting our values into actions, making hard decisions. As an investor, I think about numbers a lot, and so in support of the 1.8 million line item for Julian Curtis, I thought it would be helpful to put it in context. Look, in Greenwich, we are so blessed. We have $390 million a year in revenues, 390 million. And so this 1.8 is basically 0.5% or half a percent of our revenues of 390 million a year. 390 million is, it's a big number. I can't really wrap my head around it. So I thought, why don't I just put this in a context that I could understand? The average household in our county makes about $150,000, so half a percent is about 700 bucks. So that's what we're talking about, the equivalent of a $700 investment. But what does the $700 achieve? What values does it represent? Let's look critically at that. I think Julian Curtis is the epitome of what Greenwich should value, first education. JC is a magnet school. 25% of the kids choose to go there for the education, which is great. Second, it's a low-income school. Title I, as was mentioned before, 40% or more of the students come from low-income families. And third, diversity. Julian Curtis is diverse economically, it's diverse racially, which is important, also ethnically, 60 countries and 30 languages. Do we, as Greenwich residents, value education? Do we value our low-income communities? Do we value diversity? For 70 years, sadly, it looks like the answer has been no when it comes to Julian Curtis in terms of how we've made these decisions and how we've deployed our dollars. It's made it look like we don't value education. We don't value diversity, and we don't value our low-income families. But that's not Greenwich. We know that's not Greenwich, and that's not, at least how we've acted in many ways. With Ham Avenue and New Lab, we have invested. So why not tonight, the Board come together unanimously and support this once in 70 years equivalent of $700 investment in Julian Curtis? It's a small investment, but it begins to put our actions in line with our values, standing for education, low-income communities, and diversity. Please, as representatives of our community, show that Greenwich values Julian Curtis. Please unanimously approve this line item for JC.
Three minutes.
And.
Thank you very much. Next up, Andy Cosby, who I believe I see online, followed by Elizabeth Dempsey.
Can you hear me?
We can proceed. Thanks.
Excellent. Thank you. Members of the Board and Dr. Jones, my name is Andy Cosby. I'm the mother of three students in grades two, five, and six, and a co-lead of the PTAC Special Education Support for the district. Tonight, I am speaking on behalf of the Special Education Support Committee, which is referred to as SES, to highlight current areas of concerns for sped families. I would like to begin by thanking our Intern Chief of Special Education and Student Services, Dr. Helen Gafford, for making herself regularly seen and available to the sped community. It is a welcome change. In discussions with our SES building representatives and the sped parents of Greenwich Public Schools students, two primary topics have emerged: one, expansion of the preschool program, and two, questions and concerns regarding building level leadership, accountability, and consistency. I will first start with the expansion of the preschool program. The program is considered a gem in the GPS system. It is a two-year program and offered at four of our elementary schools with enrollment for current school year of 220 students. This compares to K through five enrollment of 3,700 or about 620 students per grade level. The program exists for the purpose of fulfilling the federal government mandate to provide intervention for preschool kids with disabilities. As such, families with an IEP do not pay, while Gen Ed families pay approximately $8,000 to $11,000 for the five-day, five-to-six-hour-a-day program, which equates to about $10 an hour. Compared to private school options, this is a great value. Demand of the program is robust from the Gen Ed population and a growing population of identified children with disabilities. Early intervention for sped children is proven to work. Yet, the GPS preschool program has been declining in size, while students with disabilities are increasing. The earlier in a child's development that we invest saves money in the long run for sped students to heat efficacy of early intervention. Furthermore, payments from Gen Ed families can help underwrite the expansion costs. We ask that this program be reviewed.
Thirty seconds.
Building leadership, accountability, and consistency, as highlighted by the recent sped audit, there is uneven building level leadership and inconsistent application of special education eligibility, testing, and services. Best practices exist at some schools and not at others, and is highly dependent upon building level training and leadership at the principal, assistant principal, and in this, in the case of the high school, house level. While this is addressed in the sped action plan, we ask for a district.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time. You too. Next up, Elizabeth Dempsey, followed by Jill Marchak.
Good evening. I speak tonight to urge the BOE and the BET members who are listening to prioritize the funding of the GHS Road because it provides a second form of egress and is a safety necessity. For two years, I participated in a town-appointed committee to study the parking and traffic issues surrounding GHS. The committee included police, GPS security, senior public works engineering officials, P&amp;Z, our GHS principal, and outside traffic consultants. Truly, these experts are our town's MVPs. Parking spots, traffic backups, and the road engineering options were studied and compiled. We looked at the traffic circulation patterns that were envisioned versus what actually happens at GHS every day. In this committee, complaints by parents about lack of access during lockdowns were raised. GPS staff explained they were aware that emergency services can't reach the school during a lockdown due to the road becoming blocked by parents and student cars. So as part of the master plan, KGND School Consultants designed the GHS access road as a solution. Support for the road was resoundingly unanimous, including public statements by police, Principal Mayo, the PTA Council, and all parents, parents who all have been asking for this situation to be resolved. As you know, a second situation occurred last week when Hillside became blocked again, this time without a lockdown alert. It was caused by just a fraction of the GHS students leaving the building. Parents again complained on chat rooms and elsewhere that emergency services would not have been able to get through the blockages, and thankfully, it wasn't a real threat. The BET and town leadership need to recognize that a single access road leaves your largest population center in town vulnerable. Our new secure front entrance will improve security, but it won't help police or ambulances reach those in need if an emergency occurs and Hillside is blocked. Lastly, the BET and indeed all town leaders should be uniting now to face the town-side challenges, the town-wide challenges when the state rebuilds the bridge at Putnam Road. As we know, 20,000 people a day cross this in intersections, and it will be reduced to single lanes if all goes to plan for two years. This is not just a school priority, it is a town priority. Our largest emergency corridor will be crippled, causing potential life-or-death time delays well outside of the GHS neighborhood. I applaud Dr. Jones, who says often that safety is our number one priority.
We have to move on next. Thank you. Jill Marchak, who I see online, followed by Heidi Matonis.
Can you hear me okay? Am I not muted? Okay, great. Good evening, everyone. I'm a neighbor, a neighbor who's a great fan of Greenwich High School, and I'm asking for your support for an additional egress road from the high school. My husband Glenn and I live on Hillside Road. Our family has been in the same house there since 1970. My husband attended Greenwich Public Schools, including GHS, as did both our children. Word spread quickly about last Thursday's event at the high school, and it reminded me immediately of the scare we had in the 2012, 2013 academic year when both of our children were locked down at the high school because of a threat. As with that threat, the street area around the school last week just froze, and we wondered how first responders could get to the school quickly. If Hillside Road was completely blocked last week when some and not all of the students left the school, how could the police or JAMS, Emergency Medical Services, have accessed the campus if this had been a real shooting threat? For us, this should be the district's highest priority and is a large liability right now for the safety of staff, students, and our, really our entire community. Obviously, GHS has been expanded over the years, but it hasn't been brought up to modern building codes when it comes to access. Now, I'm just an amateur, but I find it hard to imagine that any school could be built here today with only one form of access, especially one of this size, and yet the issue is unaddressed. And whilst a road to an avenue could help traffic flow, more importantly, it's a critical safety component. And plus, it's hard to fathom what will happen when the Brothers Brook Bridge is rebuilt at the end of Hillside Road with a single lane over a period of two years or possibly more. So this problem calls for leadership from all of our town officials, and I ask you please to proactively step up to this challenge without delay and swiftly rectify the problem. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up is Heidi Matonis, followed by Jamie Downs.
Thanks. Hello, my name is Heidi Matonis. I live on Hillside Road. My three kids attended the public school and graduated from GHS. All three of my kids told me they felt like sitting ducks in the common luncheon area if there was an active shooter shooting down, which is tragic that our kids even have these visions these days. My son was involved in the lockdown that Jill Marchak mentioned. I didn't know it was happening. I looked out of my third-floor window where my office is and saw dead standstill traffic on our street going in both directions. I walked out on the lawn and started getting texts from other mothers, and basically, it was a mess. And I'm here to emphasize that the access road is not a road of convenience for pickup and drop-off. It is a safety necessity, and I really think the town is putting itself at a great liability to ignore it. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, Jamie Downs, followed by Amy Muth. Do you see Jamie online? I don't.
I do not see Ms. Downs, so she could raise her hand.
Okay, seeing nothing. Let's move on. Next up is Amy Muth, followed by Alyssa Vanoss.
Let's combine our time. Yeah, we're gonna go one right after the other. Dear Dr. Jones, Chairwoman Stowe, and Board of Education Members, thank you for allowing us to speak tonight. We are Alyssa Vanoss and Amy Muth, PTAC DEI co-chairs and parents of three children within the district. The Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee is a special PTAC committee this year. We hope it will continue to be a committee within our district going forward. We co-chair alongside a dedicated community of reps from nearly every school in the district who are concerned about racial imbalance, inequity in our schools. Our mission is to foster an overall sense of belonging within the GPS community by intentionally building relationships and inviting diverse perspectives to the PTA. We are also collaborating with the PTAs to find the most effective way to partner with all families and help every student reach their full potential. In addition, we have met with community leaders and consultants throughout Fairfield County specifically to see who can partner and potentially share resources. In last month's Board of Education meeting, the Racial Unbalance Survey was presented by Dr. Carabillo. Highlights of this survey included that in the last 10 years, the percentage of Greenwich Public School students who identify in categories other than Caucasian has increased from 29.5% to 39.6% from 2012 to 2021. That is more than a 10% increase. The percentage of students who identify as two or more races has nearly doubled from 2.9% 10 years ago to 5.7% in 2021. And students who identify as Latin has increased from 18.1% to 22.6% in the last 10 years. We have two schools, New Lab and Ham Ave, that continue to be identified as imbalanced, and Julian Curtis is impending. Old Greenwich, North Street, and Parkway are equally concerning for their lack of diversity. A question was raised at the end of the presentation asking whether parents are complaining about this racial imbalance. And while there seems to be a strong preference in Greenwich to maintain neighborhood schools, parents also want their children prepared to work. parents also want their children prepared to work and function in a multicultural, globally-connected world. While parents may not outwardly be complaining at this meeting, they are talking locally, and we have met with school reps who have asked, "What is the plan to increase representation across teachers and staff? What is GPS doing that will lead to a more equitable experience for all of our children? And how is GPS ensuring children feel a true sense of belonging in our schools?" How can we enrich our curriculum to include a more diverse and inclusive lens? For instance, parents in town have raised concerns about the lessons and activities presented about Thanksgiving and Christopher Columbus this year. How can GPS negotiate for content across all schools versus each school working individually? And I'll hand over to Amy.
We encourage the BOE to look at the Racial Unbalance Survey in a broader sense. Many here in this room have questioned the importance of what is seen as soft skills like SEL, as well as incorporating more diverse literature and teaching into the curriculum. While we could get into a long discussion about the importance of mental health and support through guidance counselors and social workers, we encourage you to think about how we can better bring together the students and parents of Greenwich. In addition, there are significant benefits to teaching diversity in school settings. To accurately talk about diversity, especially in the classroom, the BOE must consider race, ethnicity, gender, sexual orientation, religion, socioeconomic status, being able-bodied, and various learning styles. As Maya Angelou said, "In diversity, there is beauty and there is strength." By providing a diverse educational environment, research supports that children are better prepared for a multicultural work environment and global economy, have improved confidence. Learning about different cultures allows students to become comfortable with cultural differences across social groups and comfortable with themselves, leading to a deeper sense of safety and self-confidence. Diverse education promotes empathy and reduces prejudice, which translates to a decrease in bullying and potentially an improvement in mental health. There is improved student achievement, and it fosters creativity. Exposing students to diverse experiences and people will make a positive impact on their development and a profound impact on our society. We appreciate that there are competing financial requests across town, particularly for capital projects. With that said, we are also sure that the BOE is committed to creating an environment of inclusion at GPS. We also understand that the road to a more diverse and inclusive learning environment will take time. We ask that the BOE consider small steps that we can take now to help improve access and increase inclusivity within our schools and community. Can we offer translation at the BOE and PTA meetings to increase access and participation for all? Should Greenwich follow the lead of other districts like Darien and hire a DEI consultant? Should the BOE and Dr. Jones consider creating and funding a Director of Family Community Engagement, as exists in neighboring districts? A person who can head these efforts and work to support our teachers and staff in the buildings to navigate these challenges? All of our students go to Greenwich High School, and whatever we can do to prepare our children for when they all come together and then graduate from the district, the better our community will be. We look forward to working with the district to help support and advocate for the needs of all students. Thank you and happy holidays.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up is Susan Myers, who I see online, followed by, it says F. Burke Dempsey.
Good evening, members of the Board of Education, Superintendent Dr. Jones, and the Greenwich BET members who may be listening. My name is Susan Myers, and my husband Glenn and I have been residents of Greenwich for almost 30 years. I am speaking tonight to request that you place a high priority on the funding of the GHS Cardinal Stadium Capital Project, which provides a missing access point for our emergency responders. This access, this access of town-wide importance provides a vital link for emergency services who cannot access the campus during an emergency or a lockdown situation. This is our town's largest population center, sheltering 3,000 students, teachers, and staff, and town-wide programs day and night, sitting at the heart of an intersection that sees 20,000 cars a day. While I don't live on Hillside, I live on the street next to it, and I know the area well. Our son and daughters went to Greenwich Public Schools and were fortunate to be able to walk to GHS. I am well acquainted with the complaints from fellow GHS parents about Hillside Road being flooded with cars and gridlocked. I shudder to think what would have happened if a true emergency had happened last Thursday when the Hillside Road once again was frozen. I see that this project is attached to rebuilding, the rebuilding of the stadium's visitor stands. Although my children played sports at GHS, and I am generally in favor of things that enhance the athletes' and spectators' experience, I see this as two separate and completely different projects. I would give egress and safety the priority if it came down to a budget constraint. There is no reason to put such a large community in a potentially life-threatening situation if we have a solution. If GHS is locked down and parents block access, as had happened before, your largest population center is vulnerable. School staff have known about this for years and have supported this road. Chief of Police James Heavey and Fire Chief Joseph Mew have both endorsed the need for this access road. If that is not enough, we need to consider the miles of backup that will be created with the Putnam Bridge rebuild and the impact that will have on the flow of traffic. That is 20,000 cars backed up for a single file for two years on our largest emergency corridor. I suggest you focus on the importance of this issue and utilize the authority you have to keep our students and community safe. I urge the BOE to place this as a number-one priority for the 2022-23 capital budget and let the BET fund it and the town administration get this project started immediately. Thank you. Happy holidays.
Thank you very much. Next up is Burke Dempsey, who I do see online, followed by Charles Jurgens.
Hi, it's Burke Dempsey. I live on 21 Hillside Road. My wife may have spoken or will speak. I just want to approach it a little bit differently because I've lived here 20 years and I've seen the traffic. I know what I'm living with, and this is more about everyone else out there. Every single person in town is going to notice this without having the road. When the bridge gets put in between Hillside and the Post Road, that effectively, you're not going to feel very good because you're going to find out that you're going to have to either leave for school to pick up your child, or your child's got to go a lot earlier, or you're going to be chronically late. The, I don't think people have really conceptualized the gravity of what's going to happen when that bridge starts to go in. So getting the road in now is very, very important for everyone in town, and not just for me, living on the street. I already know it's coming, but you guys don't know it's coming, and we've been thinking about it. So just imagine what your day's going to be like. Every single person in town goes up and down that road. There's not a person that's going to escape this, but with the road, that would alleviate a lot. Secondly, if there's ever a crisis that's been talked about, or there's a natural disaster that needs to school, those two roads are necessary. We saw when there was a crisis about 15 years ago, trees went down at either side. The school was not even usable. The second road would have cured that. Finally, those people that are coming to visit our town in the next few years, and they go down the Post Road, which they're going to have to do, they are going to see a big snafu. Again, it would be alleviated by getting the bridge in now. The minute something bad happens is going to be more than the cost of that back bridge to make a second road. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next up is Charles Jurgens, followed by Allison Walsh. I don't see him online. Do you?
I'm not seeing him, no.
Okay, let's go next then to Allison Walsh, followed by Dana Franks.
Hi, I'm Allison Walsh. I'm an RTM member. I'm proud to be an active member of our community and glad to be a GHS parent. I want to thank all the administrators, teachers, and Board of Ed members for all you've done in the past couple of years, especially. I want to speak in favor of the egress road, both for safety and for transportation planning reasons. I think it's vital for safety, and I'm gonna, and I'm gonna say this. I agree with what Mr. Dempsey said. In particular, I know that we have city-like traffic on Putnam Road, and that's before we have a state project that's going to reduce us to one lane. It's going to be not good from a transportation planning perspective. We need an egress road, as well as from a safety perspective. I'm going to turn it over to my daughter, Grace Turner, who's a senior at Greenwich High School.
Hi, as my mom said, my name is Grace Turner, and I'm a senior at GHS. I am the founder and president of the Students Women Action Club, which advocates for better gun regulation and decreasing gun violence in our schools. Personally, I founded this club because I am truly terrified when I go to school sometimes. And on Thursday last week, that really highlighted all the problems with safety because I personally was scared, and so many of my other friends were as well. Kids were fleeing the building, and the entire front circle was just jammed up with cars, and I saw police not being able to get to the school. It was truly terrifying to think about if it had been a real threatening situation if the police were not able to respond properly. So I am in support, and so is my club and all of its members in support of this egress road and this bill to pass it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up is Dana Franks, followed by Jackie Holman.
Hello, board members and Dr. Jones. My name is Dana Franks, and I'm the mother of three young boys, age two, four, and seven. I'm speaking tonight in support of making masks optional for students and teachers. It's been 463 days since our children went back to school wearing masks, and they continue to wear them with no end in sight. In the beginning of the pandemic and prior to widespread vaccinations, it made sense to many of us, including me, especially in order to get the children back to in-person learning. Things are different now. As of today, anyone school age and older who wishes to get vaccinated to protect themselves from serious COVID symptoms is able to. There will always be COVID variants. The virus is not going away. Did we mask for the flu? The flu is more deadly to children than COVID is. When does this end? It is time to do a cost-benefit analysis for our children. Around the world, there are many countries that do not require masks for children once in the classroom. Denmark and the UK do not require students or teachers to wear masks in school at all. In the US, only half have some type of mask mandate. Given other countries and the majority of the states in the US have successfully navigated in-person schooling without requiring children to wear masks all day, there's no reason Connecticut, one of the highest-vaccinated states in the country, could not do the same. To people who think that masks do not impact children, and they are used to them by now, you do not know my children, nor do you have any idea how they have been negatively impacted at this early and important developmental stage of their lives. My oldest son started kindergarten at North Street last September. His teachers this year and last year are incredible. We love our school. But the masking has created an environment where the social development is stunted, and his anxiety is mounting every day. My son lost two pounds in the first month of kindergarten last year because he was too nervous to eat at school around a bunch of strangers who couldn't properly communicate with him. Do you know what it's like for a shy five-year-old to walk into a big school and not see anyone smiling? When will we let our children have a normal life? How long do they need to bear the burden of a virus that has a 0.003% chance of killing them? One of my son's first grade classmates is hearing impaired and depends on lip reading. Another neighbor of mine at Central Middle School, who is kind and exceptional young man, has never had a disciplinary issue in his life, was given detention because his mask slipped under his nose more than three times. This isn't right. People who feel safer wearing a mask can wear a mask as long as they want. I understand that we are currently under a statewide mandate, but when the emergency powers expire, I beg you to vote to let parents decide what is best for their children. Everyone has had different struggles during this pandemic. Please let our kids go back to normal learning and socialization before it causes irreversible harm. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Next up is Jackie Holman, followed by Keith Steinberg.
Good evening, Dr. Jones and Board of Education. I'd like to start off by thanking Dr. Jones for agreeing to relax the vaccination requirement for parent volunteers. Originally, the policy discriminated against non-vaccinated parents by preventing them from volunteering inside any of the buildings. This policy was more restrictive than the state's guidance, so the change is a welcome step in the right direction. Thank you for hearing parents' concerns on this issue. We really appreciate it. Unfortunately, because this policy was in place at the beginning of the school year, it meant that some parents were wrongly blocked out of PTA positions that would have required them to be present inside the school. We hope the PTA recognizes the problems that arose out of their harmful policy and that they look for a way to be more inclusive of non-vaccinated parents going forward, especially those who were blocked from participation at the beginning of the year. The change in policy allows non-vaccinated parents to volunteer inside the building so long as they provide proof of the negative COVID test within 24 to 48 hours prior to entry. While we appreciate this option for non-vaccinated parents to participate, it's still clearly discriminatory to treat one group of parents different from another. Why would some volunteers be required to take an unapproved test with no negative side effects? Why would some volunteers be required to pay out of pocket for an unnecessary medical test? And why would some volunteers have to prove they are healthy? As you know, the vaccine provides personal protection only. The package label, which you all have in front of you, clearly states "It is to prevent severe acute respiratory syndrome coronavirus." That is all. The vaccine does not stop people from getting COVID. The vaccine does not prevent people from transmitting COVID. This is according to the product manufacturer, but it's also easily observed in real life. How many headlines have you read about fully vaccinated people getting COVID? What about the COVID outbreak on the fully vaccinated cruise ship? Or the deadly outbreak of the fully vaccinated Connecticut nursing home? Even the highly-regarded publication, The Lancet, admitted "There is increasing evidence that vaccinated individuals have a relevant role in disease transmission." In Massachusetts, 74% of new COVID cases were in people who were fully or partly vaccinated, for example. It is therefore wrong and dangerous to think that only non-vaccinated people transmit the disease. So knowing that the vaccine provides only personal protection against severe disease, what purpose does it serve to force non-vaccinated volunteers to take a COVID test?
30 seconds.
Why don't vaccinated volunteers have to take a COVID test when they are just as likely, if not more likely, to transmit the disease? So please, remove the testing requirement for non-vaccinated parents. It doesn't make sense, and it's clearly discriminatory. If not, you need to institute a testing requirement for all in-school volunteers since it's clear that vaccinated people transmit the disease every bit as much as non-vaccinated people do. Thank you for immediately rectifying this discriminatory policy, and I hope you like the cookies.
Thank you very much. Next up is Keith Steinberg, followed by Kathleen Byncine.
How are you this evening? I have a speech written out, which I was going to read tonight. Then my first grader came home from school today, North Myannis. He has a medical mask exemption. And today at school, his sneeze guard fell on his face and cut his face open. I have pictures on my phone from today. This is a school-supplied sneeze guard. For all of you who aren't familiar with what a sneeze guard is, it's a plastic box put around the child's desk. According to my first grader, nobody touched it. Nobody touched his desk. It fell over by itself. It cut his nose open. He was forced to go to the nurse, where she administered first aid. Okay, that's because of a segregation issue. So he was segregated in a box, and it fell on his face and cut him open. That's what happened today at school. So I'll go back to my speech. I am grateful for the opportunity to speak. Have any of you wondered why all the focus from everyone has been all about the vaccine? Why are there not major studies completed for early treatment options that don't involve mandates? Mandating facial coverings requires the consent of the governed. Don't pretend there's a scientific basis for this clothing requirement. Not wearing a mask is not mere a personal choice, like deciding between a head covering or T-shirt. It is a flashpoint for being a free human being who is consented to be governed but has not consented to be ruled. We do not consent to a masked America because this is a fundamental change in American society, cultural norms, and rights. People who are apathetic towards their own liberty cannot eliminate constitutional rights for those who are not. This is not the first or last time that people who believe in superstition are screaming the loudest. The Constitution exists precisely to protect all people during times of mass hysteria. The masses become a visible symbol of social conditioning to Americans determined to preserve individual freedom. Thus far, most Americans have continued to give their consent to be governed, but you are trying our patience. To the town attorney, you are supposed to protect the town and the people from harm. It is unlawful to support the mandated abuse of children. The town of Greenwich has the opportunity to put children first and show the state that we will not tolerate executive orders that harm children. My children have been harmed. and show the state that we will not tolerate executive orders that harm children. My children have been harmed. Thank you and good night.
Thank you very much. Next up is Kathleen Beinstein followed by Frances Novay.
Good evening. As you know, I'm a teacher in the district. On my very first day of teaching, a second grader tried to climb out my ground floor level classroom because I asked him to put away his brand-new backpack in his lunchbox. A little girl threw up on her desk after eating grapes and I put a little boy on the wrong bus to go home. On day two, when I arrived at work, my principal said, hey, glad to see you came back. We didn't think you were ever coming. But I have been coming back for 30 years. And I hate to say it's gotten harder instead of easier. This is definitely not the same job I signed up for. There are a lot of balls in the air. Who's quarantined? Who needs the meat open? Can they hear me? Are they seeing the document I'm sharing? Can they hear what the kid in the classroom said? Who's doing screen and stay? Were they three feet apart for 15 minutes? Am I using the right resources? Is there bias in my lesson? Is everybody engaged? How's the reading level? Too hard? Too easy? Is this a rigorous lesson? Who's coughing? Who's wearing their mask correctly? Should they go to the nurse? I have a headache. Is it COVID or is it just my job? This is why year 29, 30, and 31 have been infinitely harder than year one. In year one, I had to deal with problems that I could control. But at this point in my career, I'm dealing with a lot of things that are not in my control. I'm not in charge of who wears a mask and who doesn't. I'm not in charge of whether I teach to a face or a screen. I'm not in charge of creating and writing acceptable rigorous curriculum. I desperately want to get back to the days where I do what I do best. Design and deliver exciting, engaging lessons to the amazing children in front of me. But in order to do that, I need the people who are qualified and elected to make a lot of decisions. I need to trust medical professionals, academic leaders, and educated elected officials, sorry, to do what's in the best interest of students, staff, and the extended families of all of us. Schools serve individual students and their communities, and we have a responsibility to both. No one's individual choice can endanger another member of our community. I appreciate the doctors, the researchers, the academic professionals, the government officials, and this board for your efforts to keep us safe and healthy every day. Thank you so much for hearing me and for those listening, if you feel strongly, I encourage you to speak up too. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up is Frances Novay who I see online followed by Julie Farinas.
Can you hear me?
We can. Go ahead. Thank you.
Hello, this is Frances Wu Novay, speaking in my role as mom of three students persevering through the marking period and counting down the days to winter break. As PTAC president Mimi Duff mentioned on December 3rd, Dr. Zelina and Fabian Boy shared the impact of socio-emotional learning on academics. One of the studies that the boys shared was the use of two minutes of mindfulness at the beginning of class by 280 GPS teachers and 5,600 students. The boys found that transition time decreased by 44%. Frequency of redirection decreased by 46%. Frequency of off-task behaviors decreased by 66%. Students on task behavior increased by 12%. Frequency of positive interactions increased by 37%. As we wrap up 2021 and gear up for 2022, let's use these learnings to support tonight's BOE meeting and take a breath. Take a break to improve our mindfulness and focus. So we breathe in and we breathe out. We again take a breath in and slowly exhale. We close our eyes or settle our eyes. We feel our feet on the floor. We feel our arms on our lap. We feel our body settle in the chair. We take a breath in and we take a breath out again. We notice the sound in the room. We notice the temperature in the room. We noticed any tension, niggling thoughts in our minds, and we let them go. We let them go. We let them pass. We breathe in and we breathe out. We call to mind a happy moment, the sweetness of our children's smiles. We call to mind lightness, love, and light. We enjoy this moment of quiet. We breathe in again and out. And when you're ready, we gently open our eyes and have a wonderful and mighty meeting. Happy holidays.
Wow, thank you. Um, I don't know what to say after that. Okay. Um, we have Julie Farinas followed by Lillian Desosa Mosiak.
Hello, good evening Chairwoman Stowe, Dr. Jones, members of the Board of Education Cabinet, PTA, and Community. My name is Julie Fariniars and I am the Executive Director of the Greenwich Alliance for Education. The Alliance is the only nonprofit in Greenwich 100% focused on our public school students, teachers, and alumni. First, I would like to say the Alliance fully supports the budget, the capital, and the operating budget. I am here tonight to speak on behalf of the Avid program and our commitment to Avid. We funded the implementation of Avid in the district in 2008 and since that time have continued to back the program financially and with volunteer hours. In our district, as you know, we have 172 Greenwich High School students in the Avid elective and Western Middle School is now an Avid school-wide program with 35 students enrolled in the Avid elective. There are more than 250 Avid alumni who are enrolled in college as our college grads are in the workforce or back in graduate school. Most of our Avid elective teachers are Greenwich Public School distinguished teachers, which is also an impressive stat to add to the impact of this college readiness system. I returned on Saturday from the Avid National Convention in Dallas where Nancy Kael and I had the opportunity to present the Alliance's Avid Success Program. While there, I once again experienced along with 2,000 educators, the energy, the commitment, and the excellence of the Avid College Readiness System. Avid National has proven data that this first-generation low-income Avid alumni who go to college are four times more likely to graduate than their national peers. Avid's data comes from the National Student Clearinghouse where 3,600 private and public institutions provide enrollment and graduation data. Avid reaches 2 million students and there are many Avid districts in the United States. Avid districts begin Avid in elementary school and continue it through graduation. Our town's demographics are more socio-economically diverse than ever and the achievement gap continues to persist. The Alliance believes it is time to expand Avid to the elementary level sooner rather than later and we are here to help with this expansion. Avid's proven strategies close the achievement gap. We would also like to advocate for a redesign of the current Avid District Coordinator's role. To address the needs of our most vulnerable students, we must have a job that focuses all of its attention on the resources professional development, coordination, and more to accelerate the growth and success of these students. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Happy holidays and a healthy new year to all. Good night.
Good night. Thanks very much, Julie. Um, I think we have time for one more speaker and then we'll have to move everyone else to the end of the meeting and that is Lily, sorry, Lillian Desosa Mosiak. Yeah, sorry. We said it's an hour and then you can always come stay here to the end of the business.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can. Thanks so much.
Hello?
Yes, please proceed. Go ahead. It's not how it works. Is she there or no? No, sorry, you're not next. Sorry. No, sit down, please.
Mr. Susie, your microphone is open. You may speak.
Hi. Yes. Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Lilia Nidjusosa Mosiak and I have a daughter in first grade at North Mayanus. I would like to ask your help so we can come together as a community to allow our children to breathe freely again in school. It's time for us to explore this possibility. Kids wearing a mask seven hours a day, five days a week, basically wearing masks forever should never be normal. Our children deserve a choice and forcing masks on kids are cruel and unnecessary. According to America Frontline Doctors, masks are useless for virus control. It can cause dramatic harm to children. Masks cause learning difficulties in school and other settings. And masks cause real physical and psychological harm to children. Our children need to experience normalcy once again. They need to allow to unveil their faces, see each other's smiles, see each other's expressions that are so important for their development and well-being, not to mention to be able to clearly listen to their teachers' voices. Can we please explore a trial period without masks? Our children deserves the freedom to breathe in school. Please, please help us unmask our children. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. So that takes us to an hour. We will, of course, come back to the end of the end of the business meeting. So that takes us to monthly reports and we have Dr. Jones who will deliver the superintendent's report online.
Thank you, Chair Stowe. Just a couple of items. I did miss the very first part when I was transitioning to online, but I think you mentioned something about we just had an executive session. Okay, so we are, the incident last week, you know, at GHS, I understand, was extremely concerning for students, for parents, for families. It was very, very stressful. And, you know, I acknowledge that and I just want the community to know anytime we go through any sort of incident, we go back and we review, we review with the police, we review with our security team. Obviously, Mr. Mayo and his team and, you know, all of that is ongoing right now. I would say the one question that I've been asked is what was what made it a little bit more difficult last Thursday? And, you know, the administration can only go to either a shelter, a shelter-in-place, which is you lock your door and you stay in the room, or you can go to a full lockdown. But you have to know that there's actually been something reported. In this instance, by the time it was reported to the administration, it had been circulating among students for about 20 or 30 minutes, which is very, very unusual. Most of the time, students are very, very quick to report to administration. And I think that, you know, in reflection, part of our reflection is even though students were, by the time it was reported, some students, their parents were already telling them to leave the building. We should have just gone ahead and done a shelter-in-place and that probably would have helped definitely the teachers and some of the students feel a little bit more secure. But again, as we really study what we can do and get better, what can we what we can do to improve, we're analyzing all of that. I would also say I was surprised actually that how many parents didn't realize that we actually do have two uniformed officers on our campus every single day. And I think that also understanding that there are 10 different security personnel. So there's a lot of security that actually existed at GHS. And I thought that was probably broader known than it was. Some of the parents were requesting that we have an officer, you know, on-site for the rest of the year. And so I think they did feel better once they realized that in fact we do have officers on-site. We do hope to have a security forum. We had one in 2019 and it was probably more elementary-focused back in 2019. Just some of our parents had questions from PTA. But at a security forum, we have the chief there, Chief Hebe. At this one, we would also have Mr. Mayo. We would have Tom Bobkowski, who's the head of security. All the key players for safety and security for the district and be able to answer questions to help families and help even staff have a better understanding of how the security works in GHS and also in GPS. So to move on from that, we did send out a message today about a TikTok challenge. And TikTok is an application that's very popular among a lot of young people. Usually, they're very short videos that are made. And the TikTok challenge right now has to do with encouraging students to have false reports of threats tomorrow in order to get out of school. So we did send a message out to our broader community, just encouraging parents, if you have children that are on social media, making sure they understand the consequences of, you know, something like that. When you have, when you put out a threat and police are responding, it becomes a legal matter. It's a police matter. And we don't want any young person to find themselves, find themselves in that situation. The other thing I want to just mention is on the COVID tracker that will be posted tomorrow, it will be the highest number that we've seen since COVID began. And I know that everybody has different opinions about what keeps children safe, what keeps staff safe. But I just want the community to know, it was at 64 from Tuesday to this evening and it could go up, I guess, before we go to bed tonight. But I want people to be aware just that when you're looking at birthday parties and things that happen, you know, over the weekend and outside of school, if you're going to visit grandma or grandpa or anything like that over the holidays, just be aware that it truly is spiking. The good thing is we're not seeing a lot of, we're not seeing a lot of in-school transmission. It is in events out in the community. The other question that I've had this week and it was mentioned in public comment as well is could we go remote for a few days? I understand some parents are getting nervous that see when they see a COVID spiking. But just as a reminder, we do not have the flexibility this year to go full remote unless the state would agree and it would have to be a totally health-related matter and that choice is not there this year. And the other question I've had over the last week was, well, another local community, it was actually Newtown. They had a remote day and, and why was it okay for them and not okay for us? So I reached out to the state attorney who I'd reached out to at the beginning of the year. And the reason it was okay for that community is they have a school calendar that is 182 days. We are only required by law to have 180. In Greenwich, we have 180-day calendar. So we don't have the flexibility to take one of those days and make it a remote because the state doesn't care about the additional two days in that other community. I think I'll leave it at, I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Quick, quickly, can you just give us a North Mayanus update?
Oh, I actually had that on my notes. Sorry. We're very, very excited about North Mayanus moving in ahead of schedule. Tomorrow, the move will start. There's an early release at North Mayanus. And we will be moving all afternoon, evening, all through, through the weekend, although the movers say they think it'll be done by Saturday maybe. And then we have a late start at North Mayanus on Monday and the students will come, they start arriving at 11:45 and we'll get everybody back into their rooms and North Mayanus back together as one school community. So it's very exciting for that school.
Thank you. Do you guys have any questions, Dr. Jones? No? Okay. Then we have reports of officers committees and liaisons, but we have all new committees and committee officers. So I'm not sure we haven't yet, do we? Nothing? Sure, that'd be great. Thanks, Joe.
Okay, everyone wants an update on the road, so I think we should and hopefully we will rebrand the Cardinal Stadium Phase 2 project to the Safety Road project. Because basically, we have separated the visitors' side team room from this road project because the road project in my mind and my colleagues on the board agree that that is a higher priority than the visitor changing room. So, uh, so we focus, we're focusing just presently on the, on the road and the design of the road. This project is no longer just a Board of Education project. This is a town project because, and we've heard it multiple times tonight about this, this Route 1 construction project that's gonna have us in a, in a traffic nightmare. There's also, it's been brought to my attention, I have little information on this, but it has been brought to my attention as well and have to look into it more. At the same time, there is also going to be an I-95 project that's going on. It's also gonna cause a slowdown of traffic on I-95 around the same time that Route 1 is, is undergoing its, its construction of that bridge. So we're working real hard to try to get this road ready and push it forward. Now, as a, somebody who has done a lot of private projects, as some of you might know or might not know, a public project is quite different. There are a lot of things, a lot of input, a lot of obstacles which we need to overcome. One just happened to come up recently and it's a bit of a, well, I have to say it's a significant setback for the road, which is the Tree Warden has now opined and has redirected the path of our road. With the redirection of the path of our road, we now have to redesign drainage and redesign the road. With the redirection of the path of our road, we now have to redesign drainage and redesign the road. And it's going to take a fair amount of money and time for us to do that. I spoke today to our first selectman Fred Camillo, who is 100% behind getting this road done. Now, I don't like taking no for an answer. And, and basically I am doing all I could do to make sure we push this thing forward. It's possible to get it done in a timely manner if we all work together and all our town agencies work together to make sure we push this thing through. Because basically there are multiple reasons this is important. We talked about the safety reasons. We also talk about this traffic nightmare that people just don't understand the magnitude of this thing. It's going to be a disaster. So we need as a town to really push this thing forward. We have one-third complete on the road. That ADA parking for Greenwich Stadium, for Cardinal Stadium, is one-third of the road. We have a bridge to build over by the ball field. We're designing that because of a, the tree wardens telling us there's some trees that we have to avoid and some rock croppings that we also have to avoid. He's redirected this and delayed us on that process, but we're doing our best to redesign it. I was also informed, and not sure this is the case yet, but some, some Board of Education colleagues have told me we might also have to reapprove this redesign of this road. So we'll certainly present that as quickly as we get the drawings done. So once again, I've done this professionally, privately, and it can be done in a timely manner. We just need the whole town to kind of push together to understand the importance of this. So I have another report too.
Wow, keep going.
It's a little nicer. This is, this is a little, this is a nice, that last thing was not a nice, that was a need. This one's a nice thing. Sometime ago, we put together a group to address the waterfall at the high school. That would looks like right now an abandoned lot. We have now brought a group together, Ashley Cole is leading this group, to get that redesigned and to, to make it look real good because that could be one of the wonderful vistas. Fred Camillo referred to it as could be the best vista in town. And, and we could change it from the vacant lot to a beautiful town vista. We've got the, Tony DeAndrea has given us some drawings, some elevations and boundaries. He's donated that to us, to the group. Now this group also, this will not take any funding from the, from the town. This will be self-funded. Also, we have a, a landscape designer who is also doing things gratis. It's Dylan Hofer is working with Ashley Cole to design this. And soon, in short order, hopefully we'll have this design presented to the board for, for our approval, if we need to approve it. But we'll certainly present it to the board out of courtesy and then hopefully work with the town and proceed on this project.
Okay, that's a lot. Thank you. Ms. Downey, do you have an update for us?
Yeah, I just wanted to give a quick on the high school entryway. We are moving along. And we're going to be before the Architectural Review Committee and Planning and Zoning, ideally in January, so that as of this moment, things are moving along to stay on the timetable that I presented to the board one or two meetings ago, to, in a perfect world, break ground immediately after school gets out in June.
Sounds good. Anything else? Nope. Okay. Let's move on to discussion items and look at this. We are two minutes ahead of time. So discussion items, special education review update. Dr. Stacy online?
Yes. Okay. Good evening, Madam Chairwoman, Board of Education members, Dr. Jones. Over the past few months, I've had the opportunity to give some periodic updates of this special education action plan as we have begun working on that. So tonight I'm just going to give a brief update and then answer any questions that you have about the action plan and going forward. Next slide. So over the last several months, we've put together and the action plan for the 28 recommendations that PCG had. And within each of those recommendations, we put together an objective, a target with very distinct action steps as well as persons responsible and timelines. That was posted onto the district website the very beginning of November. And during the month of November, it was out for public comment and for feedback. And we, I was able to meet with CAC, we did two different presentations with CAC, met with the SESP tech representatives. There was a town hall meeting in which we asked for public comment ahead of time and we're able to answer questions about the action plan. I've had some comments from, from you as the board in the design of the action plan and the action items. I've met with GPS principals, assistant principals, administrators, and as well as special education staff. So throughout those meetings, they were able to provide some feedback. Next slide, please. And some of the specific recommendations, we're looking at making it a little bit of a user-friendly document, adding hyperlinks to some of the, some of the action items. So for example, one of the recommendations is universal design for learning. So being able to link that to maybe a website so that families could learn a little bit more about what some of these practices are, clarifying some of the language. We have an acronym list and, you know, we were asked to make that a glossary of terms to help, again, being able to understand as well as a overall visual timeline as opposed to each item just to make it easier to see kind of how everything flows together and just some clarification on the timelines and accountability. So for example, we have timeline listed on, for each of the action items. And the timeline actually stands for when we are looking for the timeline completed. So just clarifying some of that to make it more user-friendly and understandable. The actual format of the document was chosen by a group last year and based on the LAUSD template. And we took that and adapted that for Greenwich's use and to be able to communicate information out. Next step? Next, thank you. So our action planning rollout of the 28 recommendations, we have been getting ongoing feedback and will continue to get ongoing feedback as we go through the process. A number of the recommendations have been completed or close to completion, such as the redesign of the special education transportation process, the organizational structure of the special education office, the collaboration between departments, so HR, finance, making sure that we're working together, as well as the special education procedures and practices manual. There are some recommendations that will take several years to fully implement, such as the recommendations that look at broader scope of, of actions, such as the general education classroom collaborative teaching, co-teaching, the steps to implement it district-wide, things like that will take several years. And so as part of the action plan, we've been able to identify those and the steps that we need. This year, we're looking at some of those foundational pieces. And as we move into next year, next slide, please. We're really focusing on the, the domain within the report of the expanded learning environment and specialized services for the 21-22 school year. And so that's looking at increasing co-teaching in the elementary and secondary level, implementing a unique learner program for our upper elementary schools. So for our students who are on an alternate curriculum pathway, having an inclusion specialist for programming. So again, focusing on that inclusive education philosophy and also repurposing a position for a reading lab teacher to help with our students with our most significant reading needs, to help move them up and to help support our teachers in providing reading services. Next slide. There we go. So as we go forward, we'll continue to get feedback and to update the plan. The plan is much more specific this year and at the beginning of next year. But as we move into year three, it's making sure that, you know, we update that and, you know, are able to provide specifics to the community so that everybody is aware of what we're doing. And we will continue to update the action plan on the website so that we have it marked off as completed so that that can be seen of where we're going. There were also, myself, I'm scheduled at the next, at the February 3rd, 2020 board meeting to give a more in-depth update of the action plan and where we are in implementing that action plan. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you have any questions?
Yep, yes. Sorry. Ms. Hirsch?
So I had a, sorry, a quick question.
In the middle of our business meeting, thank you though.
So I had a quick question for you, Dr. Hagenthaler. You know, I know the action plan was presented, you know, was shared out with CAC. I was in the meeting when you presented that and at Special Education Town Hall. And I know it was with PTAC, but it was never actually presented to us as a board meeting. And so we really haven't had that opportunity to give you feedback on that. So I'm sort of hoping that we can have, I mean, tonight, clearly we have a large agenda and it's not actually on the agenda tonight to go through that. So I mean, I have a lot of feedback to share with you, but I'm hoping that we'll have an opportunity to have that presented. I don't know if it's before February 3rd, but I don't know how many of our members have read through it. But, you know, before I give feedback, I wanted to make sure others have had the opportunity to see it.
So right now, I, right now, the next board meeting that's on the agenda is the February 3rd. However, I'm more than happy to come to any of the meetings or have a separate meeting to go over it in more depth, whatever would be most helpful to the board.
I mean, certainly we can get to that when we get to agenda planning, but, you know, I just wanted to, like I said, I don't know how many of other board members have had the opportunity to read through that document because you guys have done an incredible, incredible amount of work in a short time. And there are a lot of incredible things happening. So, you know, it'd be very nice to be able to hear that at a board meeting sooner rather than later. But it's just a lot also all at once. And so I know there's a couple of question marks in certain areas and I'm sure we'd like a little bit more information on at some point soon.
Go ahead, Karen.
Yeah, I think it would be helpful to obviously bump that up and maybe we can fit it into the January meeting. But here are my overarching concerns that once this process of taking the 28 recommendations went forward, it really has been somewhat sheltered from the board as with respect to the timing, the rollout, the priorities of these 28 particular recommendations and whether or not we as a board think that the 28 recommendations that were made, if we want to implement all 28 recommendations. And I think my understanding of the process here was that PCG was supposed to help come up with a strategy for doing that. And then the board needed to decide as to what the implementation was going to be, what was the rollout, what were the priorities? And also from an expense standpoint, what were those expenditures that needed to be incurred? And we haven't had any of that. So I'm slightly troubled by the fact that there hasn't been any board input since the 28 recommendations came as to what we as a board actually want to do with respect to what has been given before us. It was a board study. It was commissioned by the board. And I feel that since then, we haven't had any input and that's troubling to me.
So the, I mean, and we, as I shared with the other Karen, I'm more than happy to go through the, you know, the 28 recommendations. They're somewhat grouped together in terms of building off of each other. And it is possible that we, you know, we can implement all of those. But it, you know, again, going through each of those to look at what that means for GPS, we can definitely go through each of those individually.
Well, I think Karen and I probably are on the same page and would love to have that. And again, when we get to the agenda planning, maybe it can be put somewhere in January so that we have a better opportunity to give you feedback as we haven't had that opportunity. And there's, a lot of those recommendations are very open-ended. And I think we need a lot more information for some of them. But I will just say again, you guys have done an incredible job and you have been very transparent with parents and the community. And I know a lot of the special education community has been really very happy with a lot of the improvements and changes that have been made. So I wanted to say thank you on, for that as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Joseph?
Yeah, thank you. Sorry I can't be there. I do want to say the, I too thought that we were actually going to talk about the, get a presentation on the actual action plan this evening. So, so we might want to think about agenda and why is how that was communicated. But all that said, in Dr. H's defense, Dr. H is agreed to, is going to meet with Karen Hirsch and I as the, as the board members of CAC mostly to be able to update that way and will report back to the full board. So that's, that's going to be an ongoing way that we'll be able to do that, do that communication. That said, to the other Karen's point, I think when we talk about some of these larger issues here and these longer implementation items, we have to recognize two things. One, I think we need to remember the real urgency here. These are our most needy students and this has been an issue for obviously too long. So we can never, unfortunately, we can never pat ourselves on the back too much. I don't think anybody's doing that. We don't recognize that. Two, when we talk about co-teaching, which I'm a big believer in, and I think it's terrific that we're talking about going in that direction. We really need, even beyond the board, really need to have a community conversation about what that means and why that's advantageous to both general ed and special education students. Because that's going to be a lot of raised eyebrows if we raise that in a way that we implement co-teaching in a way that is not very thoughtfully articulated well ahead of time. We need to be really talking about that this winter if we're going to have co-teaching widespread. And then the danger with co-teach, you really have to define what it is. You know, we didn't define it in this presentation. I'm not defining it. Obviously, we need to make clear what that is. And obviously, which I know Dr. H knows, we need to make sure that when we're talking about co-teaching, we're really talking about a vehicle for specialized instruction such that there are ways for students, special ed students, to receive skill development in their IP goals. What we mean by co-teaching, what we mean by co-teaching is to support students in the general setting, in the least restrictive environment possible, to get instruction in their specialized goals. Co-teaching without specialized instruction is a waste of time. And I think we need to go into any co-teaching implementation with that awareness and with that lens. So that really wasn't a question, it's more of a comment, but I look forward to those conversations moving forward.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Kelly?
You can call me Joe.
Just fun.
Thank you. I have a brief question. We've had some, over the, over the last couple of years, we've had some wonderfully supportive special education parents that have come to these meetings and really helped us along. Those that are dealing with this, with this group, could you tell me what their input is recently? How they appreciate our progress, what their, what their comments are? I certainly, I said they were very helpful at times they came here and now I know we've created the opportunity for them to work closely with us. Could anybody comment on how we're getting along with our parents at this point?
I think Dr. Hagenthaler is probably best suited to speak, speak towards that, having presented at multiple different community groups. I mean, like I said, I, I've heard from, from many that they are very happy with the movement forward, with the transparency, with the fact that there's documents that have been posted on our website, giving them more in-depth information and access to understanding how the program works and, and other things. But I think Dr. H is probably best suited to speak towards it.
Thank you. Yes. Really making an effort to be in communication with parents, both through the parent groups, the CAC and the SESP tech, as well as individual schools, the, the as well as individual schools, the PTEC through that, as well as individual parents. Parents have responded very positively to the changes, as Karen had mentioned, and are seeing things that are occurring in the schools right now. You know, just this morning, I, you know, for the Greenwich High School, we had a parent coffee and in discussion with one parent, you know, she was able to share that she has seen a change and she feels very supportive, supported her child and is really thrilled with the progress that we've made and the things that we've shared moving forward in terms of class balancing and co-teaching and the supports that are at the classroom. And I'm having those same conversations with parents at the various levels. So at the elementary level as well as the middle school level. Change doesn't happen overnight. You know, I'm not able to, you know, hit a magic button and have, you know, have everything change. But I think we're definitely moving in the right direction and that parents are saying that they're seeing that and they're feeling that. And many are communicating that for some of the parents who might not see it. So maybe not in their specific program or they might not have a specific, something happening at their school. They're out there advocating and saying that there's being the change. And so I have to say, I feel very, I'm very lucky with the support that I am getting from the parent community. And I really appreciate the support that they're providing me.
Well, thank you. That means a lot to me, because promises made must be promises kept. And we certainly made a lot of promises to our very enthusiastic special education community and I'm very happy to hear it's progressing in a positive way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dr. H. Seeing nothing else, I think that we'll talk about this during agenda planning. Makes sense. Okay. Let's move on to action items. Sorry, did someone say something? No. Okay. Let's move on to action items. Remember, I moved something from the consent agenda. So the first action item now is the twenty-two, twenty-three Board of Education Meeting Calendar. Does anyone want to put a motion to put this on the table? I can do it.
So I'll move it.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Downey. Can I have a second? Laura Costin. Okay, discussion. Ms. Downey?
I think my one comment, which I believe I made at our last meeting, is I was hoping to add one additional meeting to this original one proposed by the superintendent. I think we find that in the fall in particular, we have a lot of meaty topics, including, for example, enrollment and achievement data, which are big topics, which I would like to see a second meeting added in October. And I am happy to make a motion to add a date when you tell me it's the appropriate time. Do you would you like me to do it now, Ms. Doe, or no?
It sounds good to me.
I mean, I had also asked about one in late March, which I can look at. But just to have it as a placeholder, I know Dr. Jones had mentioned that there's a lot of, you know, budget meetings during that period of time when we're meeting with others. But I just know we get a lot of other data that comes in at that period of time. And there used to be a board retreat at that time. So I thought it might be helpful to have it as a placeholder.
I think, I personally think with March, the only challenge is we sort of need to know what the BET and RTM schedule is for that period of time, for the budget cycle, because that's usually when we're going to the district meetings. So, and then we have April break, so I just don't have those dates.
We don't need a vote on this tonight necessarily, but I think, I mean, but I want to get the feeling from the board generally. Are you the only two or are other people in agreement with that before we send it back? Seems to be no opposition. So, I mean, it's up to you, Christina, if you want to make an amendment to add things tonight or if we want to give Dr. Jones a chance to add some dates and then bring it back in January.
You know, I kind of defer to Dr. Jones. I mean, it's not earth-shattering that we do it tonight. I would suggest we add Thursday, October sixth, as a, in the retreat category. But that was the only one I was requesting that we add.
Ms. Hirsch, what's your proposal?
I still think we should add an additional one, because there's a long break in the, in the spring and between the February and the, it was a good, whatever it is, the March and the April dates. But I can defer to waiting, you know, we could put a placeholder at some point and just add it during agenda planning if need be. It's just easier for board members to hold something in a place on a calendar. But we don't have the RTM meeting dates yet, so I get that.
The March meeting is March fourteenth of twenty-twenty-two for the RTM. And typically, district and committee meetings are the week prior.
Well, no, it'd be really.
It would be twenty-twenty-three.
All right. So why don't we do this? Why don't we have?
It's March thirteenth for twenty-twenty-two.
And it depends when the BET usually votes on the budget at the end of March, beginning of April. That's really where the more relevant calendar is, the BET calendar, because they typically vote in between that. The date that Ms. Hirsch is recommending is right around the time that there's the BET vote on the budget. So I think that's relevant information more than the RTM.
I'm happy to wait and add it if we need be prior to the start of that school year, once we get the other town bodies' calendars, as we don't want to step on any toes.
Kathleen?
Yes, go ahead, Michael.
What? I'm sorry, maybe it's because I'm remote. On the, on the agenda, it's the school calendar. What, are we talking about our calendar?
Yes, it was on the consent agenda and I made a motion to move it to.
Oh, I see.
So we could talk about it, because I sensed that people weren't ready for it. So why don't we do this? Why don't we, Karen, why don't we bring this back? And we'll talk about it during agenda planning. But Dr. Jones, if you could take note of these items and then let's vote on our next meeting once everyone makes sure they're comfortable with it. It's always easier to delete meetings, frankly, than add them, because then we, it becomes, you know, a special meeting and then we're not as flexible. So I think it's wise for us to make sure we get our planning right for next year. So I guess I'm, did I make the motion? No, Christina did. You're withdrawing it. Okay. All right. So with that, let's move to policy governance. And I shouldn't be down for this. This is Ms. Downey.
Yeah, okay. So I'm going to move as a cover sheet. I'm going to make a motion that the board approve and adopt the following policies. Zero five, previously proposed, zero five two one, three five four two point one, four zero 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 point one, five one four one point five, five one four four point four, five one four five point four four, five one four five point six, six one four two point ten, six one four two point one zero one, and along with regulations, five one four one point five R.
Happy to second that.
Okay, so as all the board members know, these were presented in October, the bulk of them, and then two of them in November. They, I took board comments. There were some very minor changes that PGC made that were in the packet for this meeting in response to people's comments. So we wanted to go ahead and these are reminding people that these are policies that we should have in place that we've, as we've been filling in the gaps between moving over from our old model to the K model. There are still some additional policies that need to be put in place. And this is the first grouping. I think we'll have some more and we'll have, going forward with the new PGC, starting in the new year. You'll note that we typically do not vote on regulations. The one regulation we are voting on relates to suicide prevention. That is because that's required by state statute, that boards approve under ten.